All right. I'd like to welcome everyone to our first April board meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and arise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to welcome once again, before we get started, Mr. Arden's participation in government class, who is, so we understand, watching, attending the meeting, I guess, remotely. Welcome. Nice to know you're there, even though we can't see you. Hopefully, you can hear and follow along. So it's fun to have students involved. So regarding the consent agenda, we're going to pull items 1101, 1102, and 1103, and address those separately in the context of the budget presentation, budget adoption item, agenda item. So other than 1101, 1102, and 1103, are there any comments from the board regarding consent agenda items?
I don't have any questions.
I just have one question about the volunteer coaches for the spring sports. I don't know if that's something new or if that's something we traditionally had, volunteer coaches.
I think volunteer coaches have been around for a while, and Steve, you could jump in. You know, it's just great that, you know, people who want to get involved and coach, you know, oftentimes they're, you know, they're the younger ones, you know, learning, and then they kind of move up the ranks. So now, they've been, I mean, even back to when I was principal, we've had volunteer coaches.
Yeah, I remember when my own children participated in sports. Often, it's back to graduates, too, who are able to help out that way. Great opportunity for them to learn and experience. Particularly in baseball, I remember.
It's good to have people who want to volunteer.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, a lot of hours and, yeah.
Dan, anything?
I have none.
Okay. I have no comments myself. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda apart from 1101, 1102, and 1103?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? So consent agenda items are approved for zero. So with that, we've approved five new teachers for tenure. So we want to pause and acknowledge that and congratulate them.
Many of their, they're here on our screen. It looks like Hollywood Squares, right? But they are here, and we actually are going to have a few words about each one. So who wants to go first? Who wants to jump? Mr. Malkishir, come on. You're always a... So hang in there, people at home. Now, here we go, Mr. Malkishir.
Good evening, everybody. This is actually something that I really enjoy doing. And, you know, to be able to be here in front of the board tonight and have my teachers that are going to be getting tenure, even though they're not physically here up on the screen, it's really a proud moment. And I'm not saying that lightly. I have two people that I'll be introducing tonight that I'm very grateful are with me at the high school. So why don't I start with Jessica Fletcher? Jessica Fletcher is our computer science teacher. She had tenure before coming to us, so this is tenure after three years with me at the high school. And during that time, I've had the pleasure of watching that program grow immensely. The amount of student interest in the classes that she teaches is just, you know, tenfold. She also brought another AP class onboard, and this AP class tends to attract a bigger continuum of students that are interested in computer science, and that's exactly what the case was. In addition, we've talked at board meetings and seen on the news how important it is to bring females, women, into STEM field. And, you know, that interest starts in school, in high school, middle school and in high school. And the number of females that are now in those classes and the computer club that she runs is just wonderful to see. So she's bringing those goals to fruition, and I'm extremely proud of that as well. But it goes beyond just the students. Jessica Fletcher also became a tech fellow, which makes sense because this is a real strength of hers. But man, what timing, right? With COVID coming onboard. So during her free time, which she doesn't have a ton of, she spends working with Marcella and with our teachers at the high school, providing support and providing PD. So, you know, we have one Marcella, you know, Marcella's spread out throughout the district. I'm extremely lucky to have Jessica at, you know, at the high school, and she's well utilized. She can tell you that, I can promise you that. So with that, I just want to say congratulations, you know, and on top of everything else, it's also nice to have somebody who's just a good person, a kind person, a decent person. So she's the whole package. So with that, congratulations, Jessica.
Congratulations.
Next person I'll introduce is Julie Pinocelli. And she's not new to our district. She also had tenure, so she was three years with us. And in 2010, she was working here at the high school. And fantastic teacher, loved her, kids loved her, and unfortunately, we had some cutbacks in terms of positions. She was part-time then, and she spent six years at Arlington. Now, when the position came up again, you know, the board knows, Dr. Fanyweli knows, everybody, just how difficult it is to get a foreign language teacher, let alone someone who's fantastic. You know, that is quite an accomplishment for us that she came back. She is just a pleasure to watch in class, you know, obviously, I do observations. She's a very proficient teacher, she knows her craft very well. But to see kids enjoying themselves, you know, laughing, smiling, wanting to be there is, you know, is wonderful. She also gives back to the administration. She shares, she alternates years with another foreign language teacher as a department chair. So she works closely with myself, closely with Ken Lewis, on scheduling and testing, recommendations for curriculum, and she works with the department as well. So again, I'm so lucky, and I wish you all the best, Julie, and congratulations.
Julie and I have worked together many years.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Doherty, you're up next.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody, and like Mr. Malkishir had said, you know, tenure is just such an important milestone, not only for the individual teacher, but also for us, for the district, because you've become part of our family. And many people know, Mrs. Malkishir was at Todd Middle School for a long time, so it's kind of like having, you know, our uncle here, too. So, you know, we, middle school is a very unique place. Teaching at a middle school is not for everybody. And when we find teachers that fit the middle school model, it's a great client. And both of these teachers are definitely middle school teachers. Similar to Steve, one is a pure teacher and the other is a foreign language teacher. Both of those positions are unique positions. I'll talk first about Alex Tatman, our computer teacher. And it's unique because for his position, you have to look at multiple domains and content areas. You know, computer covers a lot of things. It covers STEM/STEAM, it covers ELA, it covers social studies with social media, there's always math involved, so it's a really unique position. Alex's background was in math, he was a math teacher. Personally and avocationally, I don't know if that's a word, but he is really into engineering, computer technology, it's just in him. Some of you might have seen him on his sort of scooter thing that he rides around with. He loves technology, he loves current trends in games, in technology, in all things computer, and he really relates to the students, you know, students can, he's, he knows what their interests are as well. As a classroom teacher, he has a really unique schedule because he sees every Todd student, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade every year, because that's the way that schedule's built. You know, he sees every student for 10 weeks, he has quarterly classes, so it's a really unique thing. So it's not something, it's not that you can just do so easily, because it's like the first day of school four times a year, where you just have students, you have to start, you know, anybody who's a teacher knows what that involves with kind of laying down classroom routines and all that, and he's just done a great job with it. Teaching, he's always, you know, giving the students challenging lessons. He really uses sort of the language of computers as a way to kind of bring content to students. His content's relevant, it connects students to the future, does hands-on activities, he has, you know, different, he has both computer things, but also things that can make models and things like that. And, you know, we're just really happy that, I remember, it seems like yesterday, because his father came when we appointed him to the board meeting here, and it seems like it was yesterday, you know, it's, time flies. He is also a tech fellow, similar to Ms. Fletcher, and also, he's been the coach of our modified girls soccer team. And I think it was his first year, he had an undefeated season, so that's something that we're very proud of and that he was proud of. So Alex, congratulations. Tenure is such an important thing, and I must say that getting tenure in the Spackenkill School District is just even that much more, because it is a wonderful family and a great place to continue to learn professionally, so congratulations.
You got another, don't you, Mr. Doherty?
I do, and Paula Dawn, which similar, in a different way, but also similarly, it is a very unique position, not only at Todd, but also in the Spackenkill School District. Paula is our French teacher. There are only two French teachers in the district, so they basically are the program. You know, so the French program is Paula Dawn and Mrs. Hart up at the high school. And she, you know, she meets with the fifth grade to kind of go over foreign language and kind of expose them to the different choices, you know, as everybody knows, we have French and Spanish here. And she has, her students, she has every year, so similar to Alex. Alex has all the students, but she has all the French students, because there's definitely, and you can see it happen from sixth grade through eighth grade, very much becomes a family with all of those things that families, that revolve in families. You know, so she gets to really know them well, gets to know the families. Paula's background was in ENL and French instruction at Tuxedo District. She was there for many years, and she taught actually pretty much K-12, she taught everything. And part of what she brings to us is she has a lot of contacts, she loves trips, so we, and unfortunately, obviously, with what's been going on over the past year, we haven't been able to do those. But she has contacts in France and in Canada, and many contacts with French-speaking teachers in schools. And even though we, she has not physically gone, now in the second year in a row, she's had basically like a foreign language exchange program with students in France, which is great, they send letters to each other and, you know, and they get to know each other, you know, and it's been great. She was kind of ahead of it because she was doing it last year before the pandemic, and then when the pandemic hit, it was kind of there already, something that everybody started doing. I shouldn't say that, not everybody started doing that, but everybody started kind of using that technology, and she was kind of doing that last year. You know, in terms of her classroom, you would probably hear singing and see movement and dancing and chatting, and I have even witnessed that remotely, so it's pretty, you know, in the middle of the, you know, when things sometimes, you know, and things have been dark from time to time, you know, without a doubt during the past year, but to see students in their living rooms up doing the movements, you know, remotely, it's just something that's special to see, and Paula brings that. Paula's instructions, a mix of language and culture, and she tries to cover it all, and she does a great job with it. And, you know, one thing in my notes that I took was, the students are engaged, and Paula's very engaged in the lesson, you know, she's up, she's about. You know, finally, and part of it is because it is like a family, and also it is just kind of who she is, the social-emotional well-being of her students are important, and that's something that's really important, I think, for middle school instructors. So Paula, similar to Alex, congratulations. We're grateful that you're here, and you should feel very proud of yourself, as we feel proud of you as well.
Good speakers. All right, who's going to try to top that? Who's next? All right, Mr. Lynch. Oh, yeah, that's right, your remote. All right, Mr. Lynch is going to talk. I was looking for in the crowd. Not much of a crowd, but I was looking for it.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak about Emily Albers, our Nassau English Language Learner Teacher. And while I wasn't in Spackenkill when Emily was hired, like all of us, whether we like it or not, we've gotten to know each other very, very, very well throughout this pandemic. And through this time, I would just say about Emily, I've found her to be kind, extremely, extremely reflective, dedicated, loyal, collaborative, hardworking, among many other things. And I just want to share, I promise it'll be brief, but a quick story about Emily that actually stems from a parent that I interacted with over the phone several times, actually through a really, a really tough time kind of in their life through the pandemic. But I think it really describes Emily and the impact that not only she's having on our students, but I would say also our families. So recently, one of Emily's kindergarten students was quarantined for an extended amount of time. And for this particular parent, I happened to be the one that called to let them know that they would be on the quarantine. And this was very early on, so we hadn't done much of this at the time. And as you can imagine, they were disappointed, they were confused, they were concerned. I would even go as far as to say they were scared. Luckily, I was also the person that was able to call several days later to give them the good news that their son could return. So within this conversation, which is very emotional, this parent went out of her way very emotionally to talk about Mrs. Albers. The parent said, "Mr. Lynch, Mrs. Albers constantly, constantly called our house to check up on us. Mrs. Albers dropped by our house to drop us off things that she bought with her own money. Mrs. Albers reworked her schedule to make time for my son, and I'll never be able to repay her." I actually called that parent again today to get some of her exact wording that she had used several months ago. But I would say this is exactly what we want from our teachers. However, I would say it's especially what we want from our teachers that teach our youngest students with families that are just entering in the district. Emily shows her family, some of which know English, and one of the things Emily does is she translates for them. She shows those families who are trying to navigate our community and our school system that has a district and has a school, that we're kind, that we're understanding, that we're caring, and that we're loyal to them. We hope this team approach trickles up for our families as they grow and attend the other schools. And I can't say enough about Emily and the relationships that she's established with these families. So thank you, Emily, for all that you do. Congratulations on tenure, and I'm really looking forward to us working together for many years to come.
Eric, very nice words. You know, I will be speaking to you later about making people cry during meetings, but that was definitely very, very kind words. Everyone, receiving tenure is an honor, you know, especially receiving tenure, I think, as Mr. Malkishir, Mr. Doherty said, you know, into the Spackenkill family is, you know, is a very big honor. We are thrilled that you have, and you're here with us tonight. It's fantastic. Be proud, you know, enjoy it, you've earned it, and we are going to continue to look forward to all the things you accomplish, you know, as a teacher in the district. It doesn't stop now, it keeps going. But we're thrilled to have your energy, enthusiasm, dedication, you know, here in our district. So thank you, everyone, and congratulations again on achieving tenure. You could leave after this, you don't have to stay, because I'm sure you have a plan for tomorrow, but one final round of applause for everyone.
Any thoughts or comments from any of you that'd like to share?
I just want to say, congratulations to all of you, and our students are very fortunate to have such a dedicated staff supporting them, so welcome and thank you again.
I also want to say thank you for all you've done and all you are going to do. Teachers are the heart of the district, they are the district, they're the people who stay, students come and go, parents come and go, administrators are more likely to come and go, but you are it, and so thank you for all you do. As you know, it's, you change lives and change futures, so thank you.
Yeah, you know, it's great to watch all of you accept the kind words from our administrators, and it's just, it's really a fantastic thing, so we're happy to, we're happy to have you. Thank you very much for all you do.
You know, just to add, at a moment like this, especially regrettable that we can't, you know, be meeting in person, because this is such a fun time to be able to shake your hands and share a few words. And I, you know, I feel absolutely what everyone else has expressed, you know, the teachers are the core of the district, you know, they are the identity. And it's so wonderful to see, you know, this kind of accomplishment, because as Mr. Doherty said, it really is a two-way kind of thing. I mean, it's a great accomplishment for you individually, but it confirms the judgment that the district, you know, exercised in hiring you and attracting you to our district to begin with, and it's so rewarding, and we're so appreciative of the qualities that you add to our district, and to see the kind of commitment that you're making to our district as well. The district's confident in making a commitment to you, but you're all making a commitment to our district, and we're so grateful for that. Thank you, and we look forward to getting to know you a little bit in person down the road, when we can all get back to that. So thanks again, congratulations.
Thank you, congrats.
So with that, we move to the budget, right? 201?
Yeah, we're up to the presentation, so Miss Maloney and myself will be presenting. She is there?
Is she there?
Yeah, can I present? Take care, everybody.
Take care.
Matt, it's coming?
Hit the button.
Hit it at the top of the screen. There you go.
She should be able to see now.
Yeah, it's working. You have the controller? All right, I'm going to start, and I'll introduce some of these slides are similar, especially the beginning ones are similar, just kind of reminder of where we are. So first slide is kind of setting the tone. This is what we're going to review. The first part, you know, in the very end are going to be similar, but we are, you know, a couple will be a little different, and we're also going to go over the contingency budget in detail tonight, so that everyone is aware of that. All right, so just to kind of set the tone, what are the responsible decisions? Next slide. Again, this slide is a repeat, but it does deserve repeating, you know, what are responsible decisions? Presenting a budget that is under the tax cap. This is something that we were working diligently to do. Maintaining a smaller student-centered learning environment. Communicating the academic successes of the district and promoting the economic, you know, vitality of the Spackenkill Union Free School District. Seeking additional revenues through add-up district tuition program, we spoke about that last time. And really, you know, this proposed budget is well under the tax cap once again, that was really the key to everything. Next slide. So the state budget economy. We have conservatively budgeted our state revenue forecast in this budget, as we reported last time. What is the impact of the economic downturn in COVID on this budget? We talked about that. Our reserves are still healthy, and that is obviously a plus. The controllers fiscal stress report was positive, we reviewed that last time. Reminder, we're still in a pandemic. It is ever-changing, as we've learned over the weekend when some, you know, some typhoons came out. You know, we're reviewing on a day-to-day basis, and that continues. That's really been, that's really been this year, it's really been, you know, on a day-to-day basis. Once in a while, two consecutive days remain the same, but we are definitely, you know, reviewing everything on a day-to-day basis. So next slide. Again, review, the key cost-budget drivers for this budget are listed here. This is a review, so take a look again, you know, salaries, health insurance, BOCs, retirements, debt service, the total, the percentage of the budget's 85, and there is a little bar across of it, that's 48, that's covered, 48.9. Next one, you can see the numbers a little more clearly. So the proposed budget is 48.9. Last year's budget was 48.06. Increase amount is, you know, over $800,000. The budget percent increase, budget to budget is 1.83. The estimated tax levy is 1.97, and our estimated tax levy is over $500,555,000, under our, you know, allowable tax levy, and that is something that we tried to do, you know, from the start, to really, you know, hear what the community and the board was saying. Ms. Maloney's going to take over in a moment. You know, Ms. Maloney, I've been doing a lot of talking, you want to go now? Do you want to go now? Are you there?
Yes, I'm right here. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the next slide we've seen before, it's a reminder that this is the calculation that we are required to send to the State Controller's Office on their website. The calculation is pretty much done by them after we supply numbers, but the two important numbers here are because we've had, we have exclusions for capital projects and state aid, our allowable tax increase under the tax cap would be 3.77%. We are not asking for that kind of money. I think Dr. Fanyelli explained that a little more in depth at the last meeting, and the final number is the 1.7% increase. We're asking for the 1.97% increase. This slide we had before, we are required by New York State, they give us the codes that are considered to be administrative program and capital, so we're required to break that out. You'll see that program is almost $37 million of the $48 million of the budget. Capital, which includes debt service and all of our facilities, maintenance, utility charges, we're under capital, that's 6.9, and the top slide with all of BOC's administrative costs, tax collection, legal, business office, any of their administrators, is $4 million of the budget, and we just put a slide on the right to show the breakdown of components. This is a reminder that on the ballot will be a second proposition. The Board approved it at the last board meeting of our bus reserve prop, that we've had this established, reestablished in 2016, 17. It has been longstanding. We've asked for it to be a five-year. The voters will be voting on this separate, and then next year, if we decide, and the Board decides that we need to purchase buses, we have to ask for approval again, and we've been looking back and forth at a five-year purchasing and pricing analysis to determine funding level recommendations. I want to put a caveat on the last bullet. Sometimes we'll take a bus in for DOT inspection, and they have a whole checklist of things they have to go through. Sometimes they'll come back and they'll say to us, this won't pass inspection due to this, this, and this, and we have to look and see if it's cost prohibitive to put in the money for the repairs, to trade it in, to sell it, or to get a new vehicle. And the request that we asked, because I have it on this slide, it should have said that the Board approved us to request from the community $600,000 over a five-year period for the amount of buses, and we can put the money into the reserve anytime over those five years, so we don't have to do that money all at once. Okay, next. Contingency budget requirements. Basically, what it said is that at the time you adopt your budget, we have to, the Board has to adopt a contingency budget. We would have to go to a contingency budget if the voters wrote down the budget and the Board decides to go directly to a contingency. If they voted down, the voters voted down twice, they would automatically go to a contingency budget. The budget revote is on the third Tuesday in June if we were to have it, and pretty much the contingency budget, your levy cannot be any higher than last year. On the agenda for tonight is for us to approve this contingency budget, a resolution to adopt it, and then what we can do is, we can get into any specifics on any cuts, and I'll go over that in a moment. So, for right now, the current tax levy was $30,871,000. Our current levy that we've talked to the Board about was $31,480,000. We have some required reductions that New York State says that we cannot have if we're under a contingency budget, one of which is student supplies. These costs are pretty difficult to determine. We're very conservative with the number of $42,500. Equipment, unless it's a health and safety concern, and we can really put it through the lawyers to make sure it is, cannot be in a contingency budget. Currently, we have $201,000 in the budget for equipment. Each year, we have a mini-cap project of $100,000. That's not allowed to be in there. Transfer to other funds, that would be a transfer to School Lunch Fund, and for next year, because of the pandemic, we increased that by $15,000 to $60,000. So, the required cuts right now are $403,918. We would still be required to cut $204,000, and what we would project is not to impact any staff. We would look at supplies, we would look at preventive maintenance, things that we've done, and we would look at BOCs. One of the things that we could look at throughout the BOCs closer is not knowing where we're going to be next year with COVID. We have money in the budget for professional development classes, like in-person, travel for conferences, we left that money in there in the event that we're able to do that, so it's not really a tough cut to get to $204,000 that we need. I know there's some districts that, you know, are still looking to get three-quarters of a million or a million dollars to reduce, so we're not looking to cut anything as far as athletics or anything like that. So, that's what we're recommending for a contingency budget. And then, we have, the budget vote is, a reminder that it's the 18th. Currently, as Dr. Fanyelli said, things change day-to-day. Hopefully, it stays the same, because we're prepared to do in-person voting at the high school, and we're voting on the spending plan, which we haven't changed since the last meeting with the Board. Two Board of Ed trustees, one for a four-year term, which would finalize for President Keese's term, and one for a five-year term, and then reestablish the capital bus reserve. The last slide that I have is the link to the budget documents on our website. Next cylinder. Dr. Fanyelli, you want to take it home?
Yeah, so, I mean, to go back two slides, just to remind everyone, and she did just the budget vote, it is May 18th, you know, have that on your calendar. It's in-person, you know, at the high school, in the auditorium, where it usually is, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and it is three things, or really four things, you know, the budget and the capital bus reserve, and then two trustees positions. So, I know that Michelle said that, but just want to review that, and that's probably a good place to leave the slides. Really, the last slide, you know, is any questions or any comments from the Board, you know, about what we presented or revisited last week? We will take that now, and then after that, I guess you would vote on the ones you haven't voted on yet.
Right.
Just leave this line up, because that's the reminder.
Questions or comments?
So, I got a, maybe just a refresh. At the last presentation, we outlined all of the additional enhancements to our district, right? We're going to add additional formalized assistant superintendent, we're going to have to hire another principal, we've invested more PD, and we're going to do summer programs if feasible. So, we add a lot more programs for our students. So, basically, we kind of have everything we want, right? I mean, the budget, based on your budget, we're going to be able to do all of that that was stated at the last meeting.
Correct. That is correct. You did a good job of capturing that. You know, we did go over the previous two board meetings, everything, but we could review it again if anyone has a question about some of that. You know, we talked about our COVID return plan with the summer programs, we talked about Mr. Farrell moving up and really adding equity as a big focus for us next year, and hiring, and of course, the COVID response plan, so thank you for stating that, but does anyone have any questions about that?
Well, no, I'm just saying that we didn't put it bare bones, but it's a very robust budget program that we're putting in place. Now, the other piece, I guess, is subsequent to that presentation, we've gotten some additional updates, outlooks on our state aid, and maybe, you know, I saw some of the data, maybe we need some clarification on where we at from a state aid perspective, because there seems to be a lot of information in the press about how much a lot of school districts have done all this state aid. I mean, even in the, you know, state funding, I mean, it shows that we were, I mean, it showed a significant increase, so I don't know what the actual numbers are, and maybe you could kind of outline what that is.
Sure, I mean, it's a very good question. Michelle's going to pop on in a second, and maybe flip it back to, so Michelle is seated by everyone when she speaks now. We're still processing all that. The papers like to report things, but there's a lot of information that has to be disseminated, you know, in order to figure out exactly where that money goes. Michelle, do you want to start, and I will jump in based on what you say?
Before I do that, I forgot to say that I was in a bad spot following all those tenure recommendations, so I was a little nervous about starting this for everybody. Art, if you look at just the detail from the state aid run, and you were to take it base value, everything that was there, the increase was approximately $1.3 million. One of the things that changed, and I don't want to get too detailed or too technical on this, is if you remember, the Governor came out with his number last time, and he consolidated everybody, and we just got a number for what they called services aid, so transportation aid, all the other aids were in there, and it was really not possible for us to dig deep into how much was BOCs, how much was transportation. So, now this time, they pulled out the BOCs aid and all these different types of aids. We will know more, we're supposed to be receiving guidance from SED at the end of the month regarding both the federal stimulus packet, we're supposed to come out with something in writing at the end of the month, and we will know more on the details of the state aid. What I can tell you from looking at it is that, at the very minimum, transportation aid is projected too high because of the COVID. We are not going to have those expenses to generate the aid that's on that sheet for next year. Our BOCs aid, it looks high again, and each year it usually is. What happens is the state takes a data from back in November. Well, back in November, we put this information in in August and September, we didn't expect to be short with transportation, short with BOCs expenditures, so as soon as we can get concrete numbers, we will. There's several training programs coming in, business officials have been talking in Dutchess County constantly about trying to figure out where this is. The state aid is really a lot different than it has been in the past, and the other piece is that the federal stimulus money, there is no guidance, except we can't count for it in the general fund, and that, they're going to have that information out by the end of the month.
Okay. Now, the other question is, if I take a look at that state run, the delta between the latest run and the previous run was like over $2 million, right? So, can you at some point, maybe not tonight, but help bridge to how you get to the 1.3, and what's the net benefit to the school district at that point? I mean, maybe do I do that every month?
As soon as we get all the formulas so that we can run them based on where we think the numbers are going to be, we'll be happy to provide it. I'll just give you a quick example, going through the transportation number, we just see a number out here. We see $1.4 million for transportation aid. Yeah, 1.472. We have to go into all the details on that. There's like, it's like the IRS tax code, I think I've said before. It's a three-page calculation with different numbers. It's based on, like, attendance, how rich or poor the school district is, what our aid ratio is, what's summer miles, what's allowable, what's not allowable. So, I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to get too technical, but it's not an easy process, and it's not just throwing like a dart at a dartboard and say, okay, we'll do 1.2 million next year. But as soon as we have that information, we will provide that.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. I don't have any questions.
Sure.
Other questions or comments? Anyone?
I don't have any questions. I just feel the same way that I felt last time we met with this budget, is that it seems like it's very reasonable, covers all of our programs, our plans, you know, in a robust way, and it seems responsible to our taxpayers, which I think has been really on our minds a lot during this year, and, but also responsible to our student population, which, and their needs, which we're predicting and focusing on, so I don't have any questions on the budget.
Dan?
Michelle, is the 1.3 million increase above what you had anticipated before, or is it, is that the number that you're using in the budget number now?
It's the exact number that SED sent down to us, and that's above what we projected last time, and we had to start to cut some numbers. The other piece, I'll tell you, is that right now, they put in the budget for this year, they gave us $162,000 for universal pre-K. We have to discount that immediately because we don't get that. So, Dan, I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I would just comment on the budget here really quick as well. We've definitely spoken about a lot of things that we're looking to do here, and I've tried to make a point of trying to do the best we possibly can for our students while also being fiscally responsible for all of our communities. So, it's really important for me that I saw a number that I thought was reasonable, a reasonable increase in the levy, and I guess the last thing I would ask, because this is still a little confusing to me, is if more state aid comes in than we're anticipating, does that get passed on to the community, or how does that affect the levy? Because we're going to be potentially approving a levy number tonight, right? So, how does that go ahead in the future if we end up getting more from the state, and how that can be a benefit to our community as a relief? I'm assuming that some of the legislation behind this was twofold, right? I'm thinking that some of the legislation was to fill gaps and help catch students up that might have fallen behind, but to also provide some relief to the community in a time when they can use it, so if you can comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, Dr. Fanyelli, okay?
Yeah, you can start, and then I'll go.
Okay. So, if we get more state aid than this year, than has been done in the, like, than we projected, and this has happened to us, at the end of the year, we, it falls to our fund balance, which could help reduce next year's tax burden for the community. If there is an urgent need for something, you could appropriate some of that money into the budget if you wanted to. Those are the two really good options that we would have right now. Because at some point, you know, we have very good reserves and healthy, but at some point, and I can't speak directly to it, but we're going to have a funding cliff with this federal money, so one year is just going to start to fall off, so we have to be prepared for that and be prudent. But right now, with the state aid, that's what usually happens, if we get extra money in for special needs kids or things like that, some of those we use to drive, to help with the expenditures.
So, Michelle, I got a follow-up question. Dan, I hope, can I follow?
Please, please, yeah.
So, my own question is, so does that mean that if there is a significant increase, then it probably makes sense that you don't focus on recurrent programs, but more on one where it might be a definitive time period? So, if you do face a fiscal cliff, you don't have a significant issue? And second part is, is the other option is that you could use it towards exclusions, like capital, reducing your capital obligations, or you can't?
No, you're on mute. I was going to say, no, you can't, but you're on mute, go ahead.
Sure. We could use it for debt service, you know, for next year, if we were to have significant increases. I believe you had previously asked, and we said that, after next year, we should be flat with our debt service, but that extra aid will help us balance our budget, so we can't just pay off stuff, we can't just pay off bonds, we can't pay them off early. We've checked, interest rates are slow low, we can't refinance on them right now, but yes, in some ways, the revenue is going to help offset the expenses in the future.
Okay, good, thank you. But what she's also saying is, you know, we try to come in low on the budget so that it doesn't fluctuate or change, you know, from just from today on, that'll be it, but anything that's huge, we will apply and use for the future.
But just one more question or comment, right? I mean, in terms of the mechanics, in terms of setting the levy, right? I mean, you really have until August 1st to do that, right? I mean, if there's a lot of change, either positive or negative, that impacts the district.
You could, but if you go any lower, we're going to be, three years from now, you're You could, but if you go any lower, we're going to be, three years from now, you're going to be begging to, to, to have a higher tax levy, a little bit higher tax levy, because right now, we're two years in a row. We're 500,000 this year under the tax levy. So that's ruining our base for, for what we can raise for taxes. I mean, I know, I think that right now, if we go any lower than what we are right now, um, it's going to, it's going to affect us in a long range in a, in a negative way.
Okay. Well, and I guess the other piece they'll bring to where to help provide headlights into that outlook, that's where a five-year strategic plan might help, right? I mean, a financial plan that's beyond your current planning horizon. I think that will also be helpful in terms of guiding audio operations going forward too, I think, you know?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, no, no more questions. I don't, back to you, Dan, if you have any.
I'm, I'm all right.
To me, I, to me, what we're hearing is, you know, um confirms, you know, of course, that we've, that we've taken. I mean, well, what we're hearing here is potentially good news as far as the state aid goes. You know, there's still a lot of uncertainty uh as to how those numbers are going to finally sort of solidify. And so uh the decisions that we've made, uh, have been, and I think I used this phrase last time, have been um reflective of, of a budget that is mature and is responsive rather than reactive. You know, and, and I see the approach that, that you've taken in building this budget as all those things still. You know, uh, it's been responsive to our needs, it's been responsive to the uh circumstances that we've been living through over this last year. It's been uh responsible in all those respects. Uh, responsiveness is responsible, I think, at the same time. Uh, and it's reflective, I think, of the maturity of the approach that we've taken in the past. And while it's always good, I think, to plan as far out into the future as we can, I think we're also confirming here that the approach we've taken in the past has been prudent. And we're, you know, continuing that course. And that's, I think, what pleases me the most, you know, here. To me, it would be reactive rather than responsive and responsible to kind of try to bottom things out if, if, you know, state aid comes in a little bit higher than we might have expected because of what Michelle was just talking about. I mean, you create problems in the future because that limits our ability to increase the budget in the future. Are there limits as to how much, you know, tax levy can increase year to year, year over year? So uh I think we have to take stock where we are at, uh, you know, try to solidify, strengthen the current finances if news is a little bit better than we might have projected and build for the future off of that. And I think that's, that's what, you know, you put in place. Thank you. So uh if that's the, of the um comments and, and questions from the board, I think we're ready to approve uh the three uh items from the consent agenda that we excluded. 1101, which is the budget itself. 1102, find the numbers right. 1102 is the property tax report card. And 1103 is the contingency budget assumptions and um budget notice. So uh do we have motion to approve 1101, 1102, and 1103?
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so uh the budget is adopted for zero. Okay. All right, well, thank you. I'm glad we can answer more questions. And uh now we have uh the budget adopted. So we will move forth with uh producing a newsletter capturing all this and getting that out to the public. But we, uh, we have another presentation tonight. Um, we have our secondary principals here. They, they gave us a taste of their, uh, their voices and their, their nice words earlier, but we're going to call them back. Mr. Mouscher is going to lead us off again. Um, and he has a couple of special guests with him, uh, you know, via Google. So he's going to introduce them and uh, and take it away. Mr. Mouscher, it's all yours.
Thank you again. I appreciate it. I guess you're very busy. I just texted uh Mr. M. They're at the high school now, uh, preparing for the, for the, for the play. So they'll be coming on in just a moment. There they are. So Macy Hammond is accompanied uh by uh Mr. M. So I just have a few words about uh Mr. M just before I kick this, before I, I ask them to, to kind of speak. And that is, you know, I wanted to do something positive. You know, it's been a good year, but you know, I just felt it would be nice to have something that would be really upbeat. And the word positive and upbeat coincide with Mr. M and Macy perfectly. These two people are always smiling and they're always positive. So.
We can see them smiling through their masks.
You can always see them smiling. So, you know, chorus has been a, a challenge to teach, you know, during this pandemic. And, you know, Mr. M takes the attitude, never takes the attitude that you can't do it. It's always, we can do it and we will do it and we're going to enjoy doing it. So I went to do the observation. We started out in the course room. There was a brief warm-up with, with all of the students. And then they took everybody outside. So the board probably knows what it looks like outside of the MST room right there. It's actually, the, the landscape is tiered, you know? I would call it a hill, they see risers. So all the students went out. They were all placed on three different tiers, uh, the bottom level, second level, and then the third level. A student and Mr. M took a piano outside, a computer outside so the kids that are at home could participate. And they just ripped it this morning. I mean, everybody was just having a fantastic time. And, you know, to be able to pull off that curriculum in such a positive way with using the resources that I don't think most of us would have even realized existed, to take advantage of that, they did. So the reason I wanted uh Mr. M to be here and Macy to be here is because I wanted them to speak a little bit about how in the world are they pulling off a live play during this pandemic? How did they prepare for a live play during this pandemic? And what is it going to look like for uh the people that are going to come and be able to view the play? So, and we know the play is The Wedding Singer. Uh, a lot of us have seen that movie, you know, love it. Uh, but to the two of you, how are you making this possible for us?
Yeah, absolutely. So first of all, thank you so much for your time, Rick Steve. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're so happy to, to just be able to continue to make music, create, create theater uh and do what we're doing during such a crazy time. Um, also because we're in theater, we love to make an entrance. Thank you for, thank you for having us. Sorry about that. Um, we're actually, we're in rehearsal right now. We're in the chorus room, in the auditorium right now. We've got rehearsals going on for our production of The Wedding Singer. Uh, you know, in the fall, uh, we, clubs were not able to meet, you know? So, so, so like everywhere around, around the country, um, you know, things, things could not be happening. So Drama Club, we took it upon ourselves to meet virtually with the kids. We put on a, a, a full production in the fall, uh, done entirely remotely. So the kids kind of were expected to create recording studios in their homes and film sets in their homes. We rehearsed the show. They recorded their own separate parts from their homes. We stitched it together, uh, like, like our own film, and then we live streamed it out to um the world. So, you know, after the fall production, just being grateful to do something. We wanted to, went into the spring knowing we wanted to do something in person, you know? Give these kids a live theatrical experience. Um, and that's exactly what we're doing right now. I'm actually going to pass that off to Macy, who's going to talk about what our rehearsals have been like since, uh, starting back up in late January.
Yes, so hi, I'm Macy and I'm Vice President of Stack On Stage. And so first off, um, we met before the process even started with Mr. Mouscher and Mr. Lewis. And they were kind enough to um, to discuss with us the safest way that we could return to in person. And we're happy to say that, as you can see, as we're still meeting, had a very happy and healthy return. Um, and we hope to continue that way. So first, we have a lot of safety procedures in place. So obviously, everyone wears masks at all times. And every time a student comes into the building, they fill out a sheet confirming their recent activity, you know, all the standard COVID questions. Um, and then their temperature is taken by an adult, and I think that's very important. We make sure that an adult takes a temperature at all times. No other student takes a temperature, won't take your own temperature. It's always Mr. M or Mr. Dave or our director who takes your temperature. Um, and then once all this happens, the student can head into the auditorium where we've been having all of our um rehearsals and everyone can take a seat. And all the seats in the auditorium are actually pre-marked and distanced. So the students can feel free to socialize, but they have to do so from their socially distanced seats. Um, and then, so when we're on stage, the students are either six feet apart if they're just standing there or speaking, and then they're 12 feet apart if they're singing or dancing. Um, and these protocols are for our safety and everyone knows that. So we've been really, really good about keeping our distance and following the rules. And yeah, we're, so we're so happy that Drama Club has been able to continue this year. And there's really nothing like practicing live theater. Um, the social aspect is amazing and being able to talk to our friends not actually virtually, not through a screen, um, has, has been absolutely amazing. Um, so I've really been enjoying Stack On Stage so far this year and hopefully you guys can come see our shows. So I'm going to hand it off to Mr. M um to describe how the performances are going to work.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're, like I said, we're in rehearsal right now. There, there's nothing like it. Like, you could probably tell we're like amped right now. We just finished, we just finished a big number out there. I was at the panel. They were rocking out. It's just, it's, it's the best. It is. And we're just so grateful to, to be doing this. Uh, now for our live performances uh for, for, for this production of The Wedding Singer. Now, we haven't had a live performance since fall of 2019. Uh, and our, and our production this time around is going to look a little bit different. Uh, we are going to be using our brand new football field. It will be an outdoor production, socially distanced with limited seating uh for the show. Um, we're going to be moving, one of the biggest challenges that we're facing right now, but we have a great team of parent volunteers and student, um, students working on this, is we're figuring out how to move an entire stage worth of, of, of sets, of lighting equipment, of sound equipment. How do we move that to a remote location and then run a full two-and-a-half-hour musical production uh outdoors? Uh, so we've got wonderful teams of student crews, parent volunteers, helping us every step of the way, building this set outside, taking all of our sound equipment, making sure it's being safely transported and safely uh stored at the football field. Um, and it's, it's, it's definitely brought about a lot of uh challenges. Uh, you know, as, as people who do theater, that, that's what it is, you know? Theater is about solving little problems every rehearsal, about solving, uh, finding the best way to do things given, given your set of circumstances. So um tickets are on sale now for The Wedding Singer. Uh, we're going to go up Thursday to, uh, Thursday, May 13th, um, Friday, May 14th, and Saturday, May 15th, um, all evening performances, like I said, at the football field. Um, like I said, we are so thrilled. Thank you guys so much for having us again. Um, and yeah, that is, that's what we've been up to.
Same. That is awesome. I'm sure there are any questions or comments?
No. Do we get to see a trailer of the production?
Well, Macy, Macy could sing something.
No, thank you.
Just wheel you into the next room and you can do this.
Thank you for the update. I can't wait to uh see the show, so I plan to go. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, and let me just say, I, I just want to thank you because you really, you know, the truth is, you do really bring a tremendous amount of happiness to the high school and to our community. And at a time like this, it is so needed and it's just, you, you're doing a beautiful thing. I know how busy you are and thank you so much for taking the time and, and being with us this evening.
It's our absolute pleasure, Steve. Thank you guys so very much.
Macy, I, I, I heard a rumor that made me very excited. Um, it is about your, your college choice. Are you, are you able to reveal that here tonight?
Yeah, sure. Um, I'm committed to the University of Scranton for the five-and-a-half-years master's program in occupational therapy. And I'm actually really excited because they have a student-run theater group and then also a university-affiliated theater group. And currently, the theater president of the student-run one is an occupational therapy senior. So I'm just like, it just called out to me. I'm so excited. And not only that, but University of Scranton is doing Wedding Singer this spring.
And you know why I'm really excited by that, right? Right, Miss Salmon?
Yes, you're an alumni.
Um, so you're going to love it. Uh, it's a great place and I, I can't wait to hear about your experience there. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, you guys are good. You can go back to practice now.
Thank you guys so much for having us. So good to meet everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mouscher. That was quite refreshing. Nothing like seeing the, the energy of uh, of the arts and, and the youth and.
A lot of pent-up energy there.
That was awesome. Now, speaking of refreshing, Dr. uh, or Mr. Doherty, uh, you want to follow up on that refreshing? And I know you're going to, you're going to do well.
Sure, I'll, I'll certainly try to. So good evening again, everybody. And I, I thought for my um, for, for tonight, uh, my presentation, I would do, uh, sometimes I do uh specific topics. I thought I would just kind of do a general kind of view of what's been going on um at Todd over like last couple of months. Um, and I would do that via showing you some slides from the BLAST. The Board of Ed gets the, the Todd BLAST, which goes out Mondays. And um, but not the, you know, not the whole community, obviously, all the parents at Todd, but, but not, you know, K-5 and, and 912. So I thought it would be nice to just share what's been going on with Todd. There'll be some pictures and things. And um, and also show, you know, the great work that the, that the Todd BLAST, uh, what it looks like and the great work that gets put into it. The reason why I can show all this is because of uh the parents, the students, and the staff at Todd. Because it is, it continues even through the pandemic to be a unique school. We've got a lot of things happen um every day. And uh, and uh, and so what you're looking at is just sort of the cover of, of the Todd BLAST that we send out every week, which includes a message from me, uh, which sometimes has a video attached. And depending on what's going on, it gives the parents, uh, and it also goes to students as well. Uh, just an overview of what's going on so you get the message. And you, do I, you have the, yeah, great. So um, so just some of the things you'll see um that we do every year, but certainly during this year has been different. So you can see that these are, this is a video for course selections for ninth graders. So Mrs. Camber and Ms. Gill sent the video out, uh, not only for the parents, but also for, uh, actually for all students, for both, because this was at a time where we, we didn't have students in that much. So basically, all students got that information. So that video, uh, you know, we just used the technology. And uh, they used that video, we were going over course selections where they used to go into classrooms. They were now just doing them remotely. Yep, you can keep going. You just click again. There you go.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to Ninth Grade Course Selections. I'm Kristen Hill and I'm this.
Uh, so just some of the, some of the things that it looks like in terms of like some of the, uh, how it looks visually. Uh, you know, the Diana Petraka and Tina Jark, who, who do the um Todd BLAST, do a great job of kind of just bringing things to parents' attention so it's clear, so they can see it. So this was about the update of where um we were going to be coming in more. Uh, this is some of what we like to share with, with what's been happening in different classrooms. Uh, this is seventh graders working on their art projects. Um, and you can see them finishing up their glazing and, and working on different things. Next one, you've got Mrs. Rogers and Mrs. Walsh in their eighth-grade science classes. And here we're showing all the different uh work that they're doing with kinetic and potential energy, uh, different investigations they're doing. And I could pause here. We don't see any pictures here, but, but at home, students are doing something similar. And we've had them in other BLAST ways. You can see that the students do the experiments, the remote students do the experiments at home as well. Which is great, you know? We've really tried to, to bridge that for both our in-person students and our remote students. Um, and, you know, we'd like to show the, the parents, uh, you know, and, and the kids like to see themselves as well in the pictures. Uh, next, uh, this is the sixth grade social studies reading theater, uh, where you can see students at home and in person had different parts and different Greek myths, and they performed it together. You know, that's another feature that we've, you know, that we've really tried to use during the hybrid instruction, is to have both the remote students and the in-person students working together. You know, you can do that on documents, you can do that in small meets. And it's been really a good way to keep the community together. Because even though we're not all in the same building all the time, we're still together as a family and as a community. And it's this kind of work that, um, that, that illustrates that. You can't have, you know, a fax class without many pizzas and without your, you know, uh, without your chocolate chip cookies. This is the pizza time. And also Mr. Scanlon, uh, which you see when you come in here, we have our pickup station out here for the remote students. Uh, you'll, they, he sends home the ingredients. The students, uh, they, you know, make the, make, make whatever, they make the, uh, the cookies or whatever they're making, um, at home, which is just a great thing of trying, again, keep everybody connected, keep everybody together, which, uh, you know, I, you know, we've been really blessed. Uh, I think that our community has done a really fine job. Very proud of Todd Middle School for what they've done during this. Very proud of Todd Middle School for what they've done during this. And, you know, and again, this is something that just kind of shows that. This was another social studies class, where this was one of our teaching assistants, Ms. Sauer, brought back from China some of these statuettes. And, you know, it was part of a, part of a class that the students were able to view those and look at those and make comments on those. The March Mammal Madness, which this is, I think, maybe the fourth year that Ms. Joy has done this, where, you know, as we know, we have the Basketball March Madness. So she does it where you have different mammals going against each other, you know, survival of the fittest. And she, but it's, it's, it's very involved. So there is a, there is, you know, you look at their habitats, you look at, you know, how they survive in the wild and everything, and it's, and it's great. And this year, Benjamin Raz was our winner. And I, and I think Ms. Burns might have been our, our teacher winner. But it's something now, it's been, you know, four years in a row, and we put posters up, and it's actually outside, there's a, you know, a big board that, that has the countdown.
Is it true, Red Kangaroo Prevail?
I think it was the red. Yeah, you don't have to play that, but this, this, yes, I did believe it did. So this is the sixth grade chorus winter concert, which I showed some of these at some points during the board meeting, but the Music Farm has done an outstanding job. And you, you listen to the music, I don't even know how they do it. You know, they, they just do a great job seeing the students in their, you know, all in their own houses, playing their instruments, again, staying part of the community. And I got to say, you know, as I walk by the music rooms, you know, you hear teachers talking to the remote students and they're practicing. You can hear it right through the computer, what they're doing, and it's been great. I mean, they really have, have done a tremendous job of keeping students engaged and keeping them really, well, learning. I mean, that's what we do here, you know? Kids are here to learn. And, and they've continued to learn, even though it's been, you know, challenging. Our students of the quarter, which we usually have two students per grade, but this year we, we went to three because we had the cohort A, we had the cohort B, and we had the remote cohorts. So, so now we have three students of the quarter, and I've got to say, it has been, it has been really special doing those, especially when we have, you know, a student who is at home, and we've got, you know, five or six teachers and myself on a Google Meet, and we're talking about why the students, the student of the quarter, and mom or dad or grandma or auntie or whoever is, you know, like kind of there with us while we're talking, because what we do for student of the quarter is talk about what makes those students special. And while academics i- is important, it's really about all of those other pieces of, of a person, which is their character and who they are and how they care about other people. And those are the things that really are the underpinnings of student of the quarter. And, and so it's been really, it's been great. And, you know, we've shared pictures of them too, you know, on the, on our, on our Todd Blasts. We had a St. Patrick's Day 5K, and you can see various staff members and students who were involved. And we've been doing this, you know, with, with things that we can't do together. Students do on their own. I know that the intermurals, they had different races and stuff, and they would just do them on their own. They would keep track on their own. And, and sometimes they do things at the same time, but just in a different space. And, and it's just really, again, been a good way to keep everybody part of the community because we know that there was, you know, during this, you know, there was a isolation and sort of, you know, that physical distance. But I have to say, there hasn't been a lot of social distance. It's been a lot of physical distance, but not a lot of social distance, you know? Middle school, that's, that's not going to happen. We like, we wanted to highlight cleaning, you know, that's done in the school. Our custodial staff does a wonderful job. And you can see me there down in the corner doing the hand sanitizing before they come into the cafeteria. And, you know, and we've, it's been, you know, this week, I've been, I'm really, I'm just so proud of the students because between every period, Mr. Cormier and I stand in the hallway, because, you know, we want to make sure that everybody is, you know, staying spaced, because, you know, we have all the kids in the hallway for the changing of the periods. And the kids have just done a really great job. I mean, they are really, I mean, you know, they've just done a really great job. They've done a great job with their masks. They've done a great job with understanding, you know, the, 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 the physical distancing that, that we need. And for, for middle school students, we're just so proud of them. And we're really proud of our custodial staff of what they do. And you can see, you know, in the middle picture there, you've got the, the, the sanitizer that we use in the lunchroom. And, you know, we really, we've continued to stay vigilant with that. You know, we want our schools to stay open, and we do that by staying vigilant and, you know, doing what we've been doing the entire school year. Sports, you know, that's a really important part of not just the SPAC and Kill community, but also for, for, for youth growing up. And, and we, you know, put in information for the SPAC's spring sports, you know, in our, in our blast. And then we'll have things like when we, when we went to our, what I call Hybrid 2.0, where we had kids coming in four days a week, you know, we, we knew that we were, we were going to have a lot of parents dropping students off. So, you know, we kind of laid out a, how we were going to do that. And I've got to say, the parents have done just an outstanding job. I mean, it has been really so helpful and it's been, it's been safe. Yesterday, I sent a UPS person into, into the school building, which he didn't need to come, but he was listening to me because I had my red vest on. And he said, I said, what'd you pull? He said, well, you're telling me to pull it. He didn't actually have to come in. But the parents have done just a great job. And, and it, it's really been, you know, something, you know, part, part of, of sort of, of being together in this is to try to alleviate stress. You know, there's a lot of stress, which is, we've built, we've got a lot of stressors normally. And then in a pandemic, so we've tried to, to plant things out so that way, you know, so parents, when it was picking up, it wouldn't be a stressful situation. And we try, and they, but they've done a really great job.
Just want to point out, kudos to Mr. Doherty. He really thought about, he was outside trying to figure out, he was working with, with the rest of the row, you know, Steve Doughty, he was out there. And really, your brainchild worked. I mean, you, you had talked about that, and with the tape, just like two days, you know, it made me, he also put together a video and sent it home to the families to, to do it. So just appreciate how serious you took it, and, and it really worked out. Because you hear stories at other places, how, how zany it is, you know, getting in and out. So you, you knew that from the start, so I, we appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Yeah, thank you. This, and then we'll give kind of like, it's a little hard on the eyes, but we like to put things in there that like stick out so that way it's like, hey, these are the odd newman days, you know? Because it's really important, students need to have, you know, they need organization, they need structure. And I will say, you know, I think that, I think the executive functioning of students overall, I think that the pandemic has helped, because I think they had no choice, they had to do those things. And, and we try to help them and the parents, you know, because that's the other thing, you know, parents are, I mean, we are just so thankful to the parents in the district. There's many frontline workers. There are many parents who are working from home while they're trying to, you know, assist their, their children. And so we know that the more clear that we can be to them about what we, what's going on in the school, the better. So we, we appreciate all their support. I talk about Mr. Yurkovic from time to time, and there's a reason, because, because he's a great person, and we're just so grateful that he's part, that he is, you know, he is our security guard here at the front desk, but he's so much more. And he gives math challenges, and there's, and he's got a website, and the students, you know, he creates them, and the students answer these questions. I've attempted to, I, I almost got one right, but I still, I got it down to two answers, but I couldn't narrow it down. But he's just done a wonderful job, and I wanted to just bring him up again, because we're really grateful to him. He's always here, he's, he's just, and like I said, he, he also always put, he's, he likes science as well. So like when there's things going on in the space program, the student, he has them live on his, he's got the cam on. So you go, as you walk by his desk, you can see when they're doing, you know, different things on shuttles or out in space, doing spacewalks, the students can see when they come by. You know, Sparrow's Nest, we're still involved in community service, trying to help community, community service entities that we know need our support. We've got, I think, Dr. Fannuelli's in that picture. So, you know, we continue to do work with that, with our dress-down days, and we have, there's a 5K that we did. So we continue to, you know, do that work, even though it's a pandemic, we, we continue to, to, to try to do the things that we know that is important to the community. I, I've talked about these before, and these are the Mindful Brain Breaks, which I'm just very proud of our counseling staff. They, I asked if they can make 15, and I, I think they're actually going to make 30, which is great, you know, we've, we've surpassed the 15, because they, they enjoy them as well. And, you know, basically, they're, they're anywhere from two to five minutes, and they can be watched anywhere. We have them on the website. They can be used by parents, teachers, students, pretty much anybody who goes to the website, because it's open to the public. But it's just, you know, it's a great thing of trying to, you know, just bring more to what we do, because we knew that the need was there. And, and these are going to be there forever. You know, we can use them forever, which is just a great thing. You're going to have to click on, there you go. And of, of course, now, this slide looks very different from all the rest, because this is the one I made. This is not the one that was made by Diana and Tina, who just do an amazing job on the Todd Blast. I mean, really amazing. What's, you know, what's great is they bring to life what it is at Todd, because we do amazing things here, and they actually make the blast, you know, kind of mimic that, which is that it's colorful, it's, it's important, and it's things that, you know, that I think are, that you don't always see, you know, if you were looking at just, you know, kind of from the outside. And also, a really big thank you to the Todd staff, because all of this, all of this content that's in here is all generated by the staff and their, and their kind of inter, and, and the way that they interrelate and work with the students and the parents, because it's all part of something, which I, you know, as an educator for, you know, 20-plus years, I never really, even though I kind of knew that, I, I've never really felt it to such a level as I do during this school year and last year of just, and how grateful I am for SPAC and Kill, because we are, it is, it's a really unique, great place. I mean, the size helps, it's small, but also it's just really the, the people involved. And I think in many ways, the pandemic has, has brought that out, even though it's brought out a lot of things that are unpleasant and that are, that are tough to deal with, it's also brought out a lot of things of who we are as people, and not just here, but, you know, everywhere. So, so that was my, that was my report, to try to give you a piece of Todd over the last couple of months and to show you some, to show the community the work that, that the Todd Blast, you know, puts out on a weekly basis.
Hi, Mr. Doherty.
Really enjoy those inside looks, what's going on inside the doors and inside the hall. Terrific to see that, both Steve and your dad really enjoyed that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just want to add to Mr. Malkish and Mr. Doughty, I really enjoy both of your updates. It's good to see the energy and excitement that's going on. I mean, I mean, it seems like, you know, the kids all, especially, hey, now I want to go see the play. See, like, actually, several kids in the middle school, we all agree now, but it seems like a lot of good things going on. So thank you for the updates.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis and Mr. Cormier, thank you too. You're part of, you're part of the presentation. Thank you for being here and supporting and contributing to all that work.
They're the enforcement.
So that's, takes us to the correspondence section, I think, in the meeting. Any comments from the board beyond what we've had a chance to share already?
Just one thing really quick. The concession stand makes some nice progress there. I'd like to see in that. I just wanted to bring to your attention, I'm not sure if you're aware, but when the ACE kids that were involved with that and the preliminary design, they were going to get a plaque with their names on that, and I wanted to make sure that that wasn't forgotten.
And I don't think, it has not been forgotten. I don't think it's been produced yet, but it has not been forgotten. And there's also bricks we're working on to, Mr. Malkish is aware of all this for last year's senior class and some other members of our, of our SPAC and Kill community. So now it's, we're not there yet, but now it has not been forgotten. But it's good to, to bring it up. And what, what he's referring to is they actually, the students designed the concession stand, so that's kind of neat. It would actually be there, you know, hopefully forever, and it was a student design, so that's pretty cool. And check it out, I think the, the higher, it's, all the walls are built, you know, it's up, up to the height, you know, and the roof's coming soon, so we're excited. It, it looks like progress. I walked through it with Mr. Lanzoni last week, and it's cool. You see the outline of the bathrooms and some plumbing's roughed in, it's, it's...
Interior walls, I think, are, are set up too, so the rooms are all...
Yeah, you can, you can kind of see, you see the, the size of things, and it's going to be well utilized. You know, it's, you know, a perfect complement to, to, you know, the field and the bleachers and, and the track.
The timetable, I believe, is, is that it would be completed by time for festivities in the spring, right?
That's the hope, right? You're sure?
You didn't want to say that live, so everyone would know that. But what we, I asked, every meeting we have, I ask that question. I know Michelle's listening, I, I always ask that, you know, we want that, you know, ready in June and ready for, you know, our commencement exercises. And it'd be a perfect place to kind of, you know, cut the, cut the ribbon or, you know, whatever we're going to do there. And that's our goal. And it's on course for that, but there's always something, but right now it's still on course, so we're, we're happy to hear. Board corresponds, there was a communication to the board back end of March, I believe, the 29th of March, regarding the prospect of a student possibly sitting on the board of trustees, as is the practice at some other schools in the district. So that's something the board has taken note of, and we'll be discussing maybe, you know, at our, pardon, where we reorganize and look forward to next year. I expect, I think, the time to talk about that. Any other comments? For me? For you? Guess I'd say, you know, there were some, some guidance from the New York State Department of Health that were, that came out over the weekend or late Friday. We have been processing them, you know, every day since we've been back over the weekend and the past couple of days. Tomorrow, there is our weekly meeting with the DBCH, you know, the Dutchland Department of Health. And so we're processing and, and, you know, I don't expect major changes to what we're doing. We have, we, we've been lucky, we developed a plan, brought students back. You know, I think some schools that didn't bring students back yet are now going to use this guidance to help bring them back. But there's still some things that, you know, we, we could change or tweak and make better. After tomorrow's meeting, I think we'll have a, a better sense of what those changes will look like, but minor. You know, I think we've, we've done a lot of things in accordance with our, our local health department, and, and knock on wood, right? It's, it's working. So, you know, we hope to make a couple tweaks, but continue what we're doing. You know, we're, we're proud that we got back before break. We're proud that we still offering a, a solid remote, you know, education for, for students. You know, we're able to do both, and our teachers have been amazing with everything again, to be able to do that. So, you know, we, our plan fits very well with what came out over the weekend, and, you know, again, tomorrow's the meeting, and we'll go forth after that. And I guess I'd just like to close to thank again the, the students from the participation in government class are still with us. Thanks for, for attending. Congratulations again to all of our newly tenured teachers. Congratulations to the students who are working so hard on the Spring Musical. Great to see all of this energy. And a special debt of gratitude to all of those in the administration, Michelle, Paul, Sandra, all of them, all of you who worked so hard on getting the bunch ready. Sandra, all of them, all of you who work so hard on getting the bunch ready. And encouraging that we can now move forward and get ready to publicize this, you know, to the community for the vote. So that closes our business, I believe. So do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?